Good afternoon. The time is now 1:25 and a Quarm of the Board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of August 14, 2012 is called to order. We're going to jump into the afternoon for a while then we're going to go back to the committee of the whole but this is in order to accommodate our guests for public participation so bear with me for a moment. First item in the afternoon is approval of State Board of Ed minutes. Have a motion please. Moved by Dan, supported by Eileen. Any comments, corrections? All in favor, I? Opposed, same? Thank you. Mertz, now we'll go to public participation and I did want to mention something up front that very often at this point in our meeting, a gentleman would come and talk to us very often and I know the board's aware of this but he's a great educator, just a top-notch person, attend a lot of meetings. David Borreth passed away since our last board meeting, key leader to get the network up to what it became and just a valuable contributor to our work here. So we'll miss him and there.
Pursued being on this board, not successfully.
He did.
He was a terrific, committed educator.
Very much so.
And our first speaker is Tina Harma and she is with the Network of Michigan Educators.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak today.
I'll remind you that you each of you, you'll have five minutes to speak and the board does not generally engage in a conversation during that but you've got five minutes to address the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Tina Harma and I teach third grade at Kent Lake Elementary in the South Lion Community School District. As a National Board Certified Teacher and a representative from the Network of Michigan Educators, I'm here to share success that we've had in our school. The Network is a collaborative partnership of recognized educators working to improve teaching and learning by informing practice, research, and policy. I collaborate with three other teachers, one of which is with me here today, Anne, in my building that teach third grade. We work throughout the year to create opportunities for our students to develop and improve important skills that students need. Throughout the year, our team plans together projects that students independently work to create using the knowledge gained in that content area. At the beginning of the year, our students share an expert box with the class. The box is filled with items that relate to something they are expert at doing. This project allows them to get, allows us to get to know the students and gives us some baseline data on the presentation skills, the listening and speaking that children are the skills that students have. In October, students create Michigan product posters that demonstrate knowledge that students have about the resources needed to produce a Michigan product. Not only does this correlate to the economics unit, but it also develops research skills, oral speaking skills, and listening skills. Each of us emphasize that students are knowledgeable experts about their product and they need to explain what they know. The presentation posters are expected to look organized and use nonfiction text features. The oral presentations are expected to be clear, have loud volume, and maintain eye contact. One of the students' favorite projects of the year is the Create a Creature. Students use their knowledge of animals from their science unit for the Create a Creature presentations. For this presentation, students design a fictitious creature and a habitat for it. Students must be knowledgeable about the animal adaptations and understand what environment this creature would belong. The students' confidence is growing at this point and there are noticeable changes from their first presentation. Quite exciting actually. During the nonfiction text unit, students research a topic and create a presentation of the synthesized information they found. The students are able to be creative with materials and show what they know from reading in their own way. This past year, some kids decided to create posters that were three-dimensional while others created plays with backdrop. The projects were both informative and entertaining. They were just wonderful to watch, the kids. The Michigan Cafe is our final project and it's during the week, the Michigan Week. Over the course of several months, each student researches a place in Michigan and creates a presentation that includes a three-dimensional model, a brochure, and an oral presentation. Students learn to plan, research, create, and speak about a Michigan place. The project is a homeschool collaboration that uses skills across disciplines and celebrates Michigan. Parents and family members are invited to attend. One of my best memories of, is a moment when a student that barely spoke at the beginning of the year, she actually was a selective mute student, clearly presented an amazing, well-designed project. The mother of this student was so thrilled that she was inviting other parents to come and listen to her. It was a very emotional moment and so many children just showed their skills at this end of the year project. I know they're learning so much from their presentations. My team continues to meet throughout the summer to discuss other ways to improve what we're doing and other projects that we could implement to support our curriculum. We enjoy giving the students an opportunity to display their skills confidently in a variety, to a variety of audiences. I am proud of the work that my third grade team is doing and how we support one another and work diligently for children. I'm proud to share our successes with you today and we're continuing to work to help kids be successful in every way they can. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. As we're bringing the next group up, since it's a new group here, I want to explain I am not getting married today. I'm just a fundraiser tonight for a women's caring program that I agreed to be a server and I guess bartender or maybe I should say refreshment tender. And I forgot I had this on so some of my friends were glaring at me as I walked back in here.
Our next speakers are a group Christina Drusty, Sasha Bigby, and Jamie Lynn Hotrom.
Hello. Do you want to hit that button? Thank you for having us. My name is Christina Drusty and I am joining you from Advocacy Services for Kids in Kalamazoo, Michigan. ASK is a nonprofit agency that assists families raising children and youth with mood, emotional, or behavioral challenges. And these challenges typically cause these children and youth to be involved in multiple systems including juvenile justice, child protective services, community mental health, and also receive education supports in the school system. And I am here today to introduce several members from our Youth Advisory Board, calling all youth in Kalamazoo. We are aware that the State Board of Education recently passed a resolution on mandatory expulsion policies in Kalamazoo or in the state of Michigan. However, because children with disabilities and mental health challenges are more likely to be expelled, we would like to shed some light on some of the issues that we face daily in schools. If you have any questions or would like any other follow-up information, please contact me and I have left my information with the board.
My name is Jamie Hotrom. I'm a 15-year-old who should be going into 10th grade but I have ninth grade credits. I have gone to three different schools out of my whole life. Paramount Charter Academy for kindergarten through seventh grade, Linden Grove for eighth, and last but not least, Kalamazoo Central for my ninth grade year. I have been diagnosed with textbook case of depression. I get distracted easily when others are being loud and I want to leave because I can't concentrate on my work. Class size is a part of the problem. I don't think anyone likes to walk, work into a crowded room, classroom. When I'm in a crowded classroom, I don't get anything that benefits my education. It's louder and the teacher can't teach the whole class or let alone control it. Teachers should take time to learn their students' styles. Everyone does not learn the same way. I learn by examples. I just can't read something and magically get it. Everyone learns differently. I also had to miss school for my mental health issues. My teachers would not take the time to catch me up and they told me to do it on my own. What I would personally like to see change in, in schools is someone to listen and understand me and smaller classrooms that at least get some help with the teachers so everyone can get the one-on-one.
Hello, my name is Sasha Bigby. I am 17 years old. I'm going into the 12th grade this year. I also have an IEP. I have been into two elementary schools, one middle, one middle school, one traditional high school, and one alternative school. And these are the issues I'd like to discuss with you. A lot of times bullying happens and teachers pay attention but do nothing about it. And often, we have pair pros. They also do not know how to deal with bullying and I also like to discuss with you that I have trouble focusing sometimes because there are students who don't want to be there so they choose to cause issues and it takes away my motivation to work. So I would also like to share that we should also have smaller classrooms because it helps me focus more when there's less people around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask a question? How big are the classes?
Usually the 32 students or 38.
In that case?
In Kalamazoo Central.
And that's one of the two main public schools in Kalamazoo.
Our last group of speakers is Evan Bowser, Dominique Mixon, and Maggie Hartness.
My name is Evan Bowser and I'm 16, 10 years old. I'm going into 11th grade but I have ninth grade credits and I've, and I've been in and out of trouble regarding school issues and I've attended nine different schools. Being in trouble and not seeing what school is really worth, I've fallen behind in my credits and I've realized I do, I didn't use the potential I have. But although I have a 504 plan, it doesn't help me regain what I've lost. With that, an idea of learning, of having after-school courses structured like during the day school popped into my mind of maybe having the potential to help those who are determined to better themselves and regain what they've lost. I want to have credit recovery options outside of the normal school day.
Hello, my name is Dominique. I am 14, 10 and 15 and this year I will be a freshman attending Loy Norx. When I was younger, I was diagnosed with ADHD. ADHD is Attention Deficient Hyperactive Disorder. That affects me because sometimes I would be in class and the teacher would be teaching and I'll catch on to a lesson to finish my work and be expected to just sit with nothing else to do. Another situation I faced would be that the teaching style of the teacher would not fit me so I would not understand and start talking in either situation and get sent out. There are hands-on learning and book learning. Those are the two different teaching styles. After I got sent out, I went to the Student Center at Millwood Middle and there were two teachers that were sat, sitting down with me and helped me out and built a relationship with me. I got sent to Alternative Learning Program in the eighth grade because of some issues I had at AOP, as they call it. The teachers built up trust with me and could relate to me and that helped me a lot.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I came, or I'm 17 right now and I'm a second-year senior. I've gone to one elementary, one middle school, and one traditional high school. I came here to talk to you today about the effects of my siblings' mental health issues. It has affected me in my high school career and forced me to graduate late because my brother has bipolar and insomnia. Growing up, when he was diagnosed, he wasn't diagnosed until he was about 14 so he was unmedicated until then, which means throughout his mood swings and like not sleeping a lot because he was up all night started to affect our whole family. On school nights, he had dropped out and he would keep the family up until 2, 3, sometimes 4 in the morning. It made it hard for me to get up in the morning considering I had to be down to the bus stop by 6:30 a.m. and needed to be up earlier than that to get ready. I would like to someday see a program that start, that would start later for the youth that are siblings of other youth with mental health or behavioral challenges. I feel it would make it a lot less stressful knowing you don't have to get up so early. After I started not being able to get up, I started failing my classes and I needed to make my credits up. The problem for me, the problem for someone like me, is there is no help in schools for me. There's no 504 plan, there's no IEP. I'm left to struggle alone and fall through the cracks. I ended up relying on my school counselor, which was not much help. She enrolled me into an after-school online credit retrieval program called NOVA-NEP. I went, I went there one time before they told me they weren't supposed to be giving me bus tokens home. At my high school, the program, you had to provide your own transportation. I was confused because my counselor knew I took the school bus home and that I had no other way of getting home and yet she still told me to go to the program. Now that I'm trying to get my credits back that I needed to graduate this last year, I'm held up because I have no way back and forth from school to the program. My counselor's only advice that I asked of her was to tell me to go to another program after school across town because they provided bus tokens. So on top of being up close to all night and going to school all day, now I have to travel across town for a few hours and then back home, all with no help. My counselor wasn't, was certainly not help and neither was my siblings' mental health issues. One day I helped to get some help for the other siblings like me, trying to live the best life we can and be the best person we can. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
And are there any more forms? That concludes public participation. Thank you.
You know, we really appreciate that you took the time to come because I already hear some comments. The board, we don't interact there in this section so please don't take that as not understanding your issues. It's very helpful to hear real stories as this board develops policy for the state so this is very appreciated and thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is, we're actually going back to C from this morning and I think it's some of the same team. It's Joseph and Sally but Vince is joining this time also, or maybe not. So, and this is on the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium and an agenda planning with the board team. We felt this is an important time to give an update on where we stand in the future and Joseph, you know, again, we, I said this before but we really have a modest team. I kind of encourage them, not just at the board table but when we're out in the field, they need to, for each other, express some of their leadership roles because I think it will increase the confidence of people in the field. For example, Joseph is the national leader on this. He's co-chairing the whole consortium. He's, it certainly helps us meet the needs we want for the state of Michigan but it just, I hope would give comfort to our, the folks in our state who work in schools in particular that we have leaders such as Joseph that are really positioning us in great shape. And he's not going to say that for himself so, Joseph, Sally and Joseph.
So this is to give you an update on the Smarter Balanced Consortium of which we are a member along with many, many other states and they are moving forthright, forthright to get us ready for the assessments in the 2014, 15 school year. And then we also wanted to give you the plan that Joseph and his staff have put together for our five-year assessments so you can see where we are going to be going for the next five years. So, Joseph, please.
Sure. Sorry that Vince would have been here to participate but he had to go join some leadership calls with Smarter Balanced. So that's part of the Smarter Balanced update as we're definitely involved.
So we just get you to talk.
That's right.
Second fiddle.
All right, so.
Build them up, tear them down.
You do that, I do mine with them.
So, we have, this right here shows the timeline of activities, the big, the major milestones under Smarter Balanced. The ones that are in gray are those that have already begun or have been completed. So we have already done, created a master work plan. We've got a project schedule all up and running as well as 10 work groups have been launched. So state staff have been working on different parts of the, of the organization and developing the plans to go forward. We also have begun procurement and we have also begun the development of the formative processes, tools, and practices development, the materials that will be available for educators essentially so that they can use formative assessment in their classroom. And this is one of the exciting things about Smarter Balanced is it really is, now Smarter really talks about the adaptive nature of the test. The Balance talks about the formative and interim assessment, not just summative assessment. So that we have information to give back to teachers so that they can use that in their instruction. That's pretty exciting. We have also begun writing and review of pilot items and tasks for the new assessments. We have several people from Michigan who are writing those assessment items, several teachers, active teachers from Michigan who are participating. We've got active teachers from every state in the consortium who are participating in writing the new test items. We will, in the fall, begin writing and reviewing field test items and tasks. And we will begin the pilot of the summative interim, summative and interim items and tasks in the spring of 2013. So there will be many schools in Michigan that will participate in this pilot. Essentially what they will get, these schools will not be getting scores back from their students, they will be really helping us set the parameters for how the test works. And then in spring of 2014, we will begin field testing the summative and interim items and tasks. So we're going through two, two stages. One is a pilot stage where we get a relatively small number of students just to find out if the, if the test items are working. And this is a really critical part of the development particularly because we have so many new types of items that we'll be using. Now, technology-enhanced items, artificial intelligence scored short-constructed responses or essays, and performance tasks that will be human scored. So we've got a lot of these new types of items that need some, what we call cognitive laboratories, think aloud protocols where we really take a look at what's happening when students actually go through these items. Then the larger will happen with the field testing next spring where we will really get everything ready to go so that in spring of 2015, you can just sit down, take the test, get immediate results back. We will be adopting preliminary achievement level definitions and standards so essentially our cut scores and the definitions that go with the categories in spring of 2014. Again, it will be very similar to what, what we did with our cut scores, really keying that to college and career readiness or career and college readiness depending on which state you're in. And we will adopt and verify the final achievement level definitions and standards after the first operational administration of the test in spring 2015. So those are the major timelines. I can say that we are on schedule. There are a lot of rumors that are out there about the consortium's not on schedule, it's falling behind. Actually, I get a chance every week to see where we are with the project schedule and we are on, we are on schedule. So I'm very confident that we will be able to go live in spring of 2015. Some of the work that is underway, we have let several contracts with several service providers. So for example, the item specifications work has been completed. It was awarded to Measured Progress and Educational Testing Service, or ATS. The technology readiness tool is work underway. That is currently being done by Pearson. And that is a joint effort between Park, the other consortium, and Smarter Balanced. Our system architecture is also being done by Measured Progress. That is underway. And we have issued technology purchasing guidelines to go along with the technology readiness so that schools know what kinds of devices they can purchase that will work with the new assessments. Psychometric services, we've got that going. We've got accessibility and accommodations going. The accessibility and accommodations work really is interesting because we're trying, it's a little bit like herding cats because every state has their vast array of different accommodations that they provide to students with disabilities. We are trying to build this assessment from the ground up so that it's accessible so that you minimize the number of accommodations that are necessary but still there will be needs for some accommodations. But we are trying to create a common set of accommodations across all the states in the consortium. It's not an easy task. There are people who have their favorite accommodations and one state may have it and another may not. So we're going through the process of creating a common set right now. We have an item authoring and banking software package that is being developed by Pacific Metrics. We've been actually writing the items and tasks. The test specifications are nearly complete essentially saying when a student sits down to a Smarter Balanced Assessment, how many items covering this kind of content will they get, how many items covering this kind of content will they get, and what type of item will those be? So the test, that's essentially the test blueprint. That work is nearly complete. The achievement level descriptors, this is essentially bringing in to start the higher education people who are experts in English Language Arts and Mathematics to essentially say, okay, let's start with the 12th grade or the 11th grade exit from the test. Where do students need to be in order to be able to be successful in college, in higher education so that they can move forward with their, with their career or with further education? So it is really important that we include those higher education people in this conversation because one of the things that we are really trying to do is to make sure that students who are considered proficient on the 11th grade Smarter Balanced Assessment don't have to go and take a remedial course. And all of this, all of the higher education institutions in all of the states that are a part of the consortium have signed on to this. So as a part of that, we have to include them heavily in the development of our achievement level descriptors, essentially saying what does it mean to be proficient? And if you are considered proficient, are you ready for the next level of work after high school? Yes.
Are you, can you amend that the higher education institutions have agreed that they will not use their own testing when the students come in to place them if they get a certain score on them?
So it's essentially saying, it's not saying you can't use a test to place the students but essentially they would not be placed in remedial courses.
Regardless of what they get on the higher education.
Right. So if they, if they are showing up with this kind of score, with a proficient score on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, then they would be placed into, into credit-bearing courses. Now, that does require a lot of faith from the higher education institutions and that is the reason that we are including them so heavily in this development of the, of the standards. Now, so that's a good question. It is part, and we do have a director of collaboration with the higher education institutions who is working very closely with people in Michigan and around the country to make sure that we get good representation on this achievement level descriptors panel, to make sure that they are reasonably described and that those students who meet that kind of description of their performance are ready for credit-bearing courses in college. We also have a validation and research agenda which I think is really an important piece of this. Essentially what we're trying to, what we as a consortium are trying to do is we're trying to take the expectations that were set for students through the adoption of the Common Core. Rigorous expectations for what students should, should learn. And by giving the kind of information that you can get out of a computer adaptive test, both summative and interim, and formative assessment, giving teachers the tools they need to adjust instruction. That's what the consortium is about. It's not just about building a better test, it's about giving teachers the information they need to modify their practice. And if we can do that, the, the theory of action behind the consortium is if we provide educators with the kind of information that will help them adjust their instruction, they'll be able to have many more, many more of their students come out of, out of the K-12 system, career and college ready. So we're actually going to be following that. Our research agenda will be following the actual Our research agenda will be following the actual implementation and the consequences of implementing this new assessment system. Then, you can see there are several things that are still in negotiation and several requests for proposals that are still under development. So, we've got several things going, several things that we will get going soon, and, and other things that we can wait a little while before they actually get going. So, you can see there's a lot of work underway, there's a lot yet to do, we still have a significant amount of time before 2014, 15. Progress on other fronts, we do have two special panels, advisory panels for students with disabilities and English language learners. It is really important that we get accommodations right. It's really important that we make sure that the assessment is accessible from the get-go, not just because we provide accommodations. Same thing for English language learners. Again, we released guidelines for new hardware purchases, and we do have some collaboration efforts, again, collaboration with higher education on the achievement level descriptors, really important part of the work. Linking to NAEP and the Program for International Assessment, or PISA, during the 2014 field test to address comparability. One of the things that people have been concerned about is because there are two consortia, Park, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career, and Smarter Balanced, they're not, we're not really working together to develop things, it's hard enough to get 27 states to do something the same way, let alone two consortia of many states. So, one of the things that we are looking at is embedding NAEP items on both Smarter Balanced and, and Park so that you could essentially say, if you scored this high on the Park assessment, you would be considered proficient on the Smarter Balanced assessment and vice versa. So, there will be some level of comparability. Again, we're defining comparable accommodation policies across states, not an easy task. We are working toward a common definition of the 1% population, or the students who would take the modified assessment based on alternate, or the, the alternate assessment based on alternate achievement standards. It's the, the assessment for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities, essentially on my access. There are different definitions of who those students are in that 1% population across states. We also need to be pretty clear that the same populations of students are taking the same, taking Smarter Balanced in every state so that we can make those comparisons across states. If it's variable across the states, the comparisons aren't valid. That's, again, very difficult, and we're doing that across four consortia. Smarter Balanced, Park are the two consortia for general assessments, general populations. And then, there's Dynamic Learning Maps, and the National Center and State, Center and State Collaborative are working on the 1% assessments, the replacement for my access in all the different states. So, across those four, we're coming to this common definition. And we are developing a sustainability plan through collaboration with CCSSO, the National Governors Association, and Park. The reason this is really important is that Smarter Balanced and Park both received significant funding to do development work, but no funding to do the implementation work once it's time to actually implement the assessment. So, states are going to have to come up with, and the consortium, consortium are going to have to come up with their sustainability plans for how they're going to make things happen going forward after the development work is done. So, you can find more at Smarter Balanced. Should we take any questions at this point on Smarter Balanced before we move to the five-year?
Yeah, Eileen, Nancy, Mary Ann.
1% of the 1% of people.
Kathy.
1% is not 99%.
No, it's a different 1%.
Joseph, I, I was glad to hear you mention formative because it's not listed in the handout, formative assessment. And I, I, I understand that the, that formative is sort of a catchword, that interim assessment, if it's informing teachers, is really good too. But, can you get, tell me how, what the components are briefly for summative, interim, and formative?
Sure.
I know they're listed there, but I didn't see formative at all.
Yeah, the summative assessment will be the end of year, students take it within the last 12 weeks of the year, it is essentially the accountability assessment. The interim assessment can be taken multiple times throughout the year. Essentially, it, it could be a mini summative assessment, how are they doing on this overall assessment, or it could be configured to be a unit assessment, based on, I've taught this particular unit, based on the Common Core, now give me a test based on that unit, see how my students are doing. And then, the formative, you know, those interim results can be used formatively, but formative assessment, as it has been described in the literature as a very powerful and effective intervention in schools, is really not a product, it's a set of processes and tools. So, how do I go about gathering information on a day-to-day and minute-to-minute basis about the effectiveness of my instruction, about how well the students that I've been teaching are learning what I'm teaching? So, it can be as simple as having teachers ask, you know, who, who, who here is struggling with what I just taught? That, that's, that's a really basic form of, of formative assessment, but it can be useful. There are other things that are more formal, that are more, you know, you might have students on their way out say, these are the things that I didn't do well, these are the things that I did. There's a lot of individual student involvement so that the students get involved and more invested in their, in where they are, where they need to go. And the formative assessment materials that will be provided by the consortium really will be in a digital clearinghouse that will be socially networked essentially so that the higher quality things that people find being effective in their classroom kind of float to the top, like you might see on an Amazon.com, these are the things that get good ratings. But it would be vignettes, it would be videos of good formative practices in the classroom, it would be specific tools that people are using in their classroom that would, could be uploaded and then be a part of this socially networked, um, digital clearinghouse. So, the, the construction of this digital clearinghouse is beginning. The work gathering up the vignettes, the good, the videos of good formative practices are, are just beginning at this point.
The reason that I ask this, if I can just follow up, is because, again, you know, there's the educational component of Common, uh, Common Core, and then there's the political aspect. And what I want us to do is to really talk through for the public what's important for this from an educational perspective. I don't want anything that, that we value to be overshadowed by debates on whether or not the federal government should be involved in this, because it's not, but it appears that way to people. So, this, this is so different, the, having this process is so markedly different from anything that's going on in the classrooms, that that alone, to me, has a huge potential for changing instruction, informing instruction. And, you know, of course, the devil's in the details, but I'm really pleased that you explained it to us, and thanks for being part of this and doing such a good job on it.
Sure, thank you.
Eileen, please, and Mary Ann, and Kathy.
Eileen, I'm, I'm sorry, Nancy, that was Eileen. Yeah.
To piggyback on that again, I, I love my fellow board members, they just give me these great segues.
Say us well.
I have heard concern on the part of many people that we're putting this Common Core, that they are insisting on calling it, this Common Core, into place without any field testing, without any kind of knowledge whether or not it works or not. And I think the piece that's being missed by the public is you don't, you don't field test, at least what I think I'm hearing you say, you don't field test standards, core content expectations, except by assessment, to know whether or not it's something that works. So, the field testing isn't in so much the development of the core, of the Common Core, it's, it's in the assessment of the delivery of the Common Core. And so, I, I really am glad that you're talking about all the different kinds of assessments that are, that are coming into play. This is something that our teachers and administrators and our, probably our older students who understand this, and our parents have wanted for a long time, not just the summative end of year, you know, one and done, but something that's ongoing, that has life for our educators, to allow them to adjust to the needs of students, and to allow students and parents to be able to see truly what is going on, what's working, what isn't. So, I think that it's important that we share with our public that, in fact, this is being field tested, in fact, this is being adjusted, this is being looked at rationally, in a way that we will make this, to the best of our ability, the most, the most rigorous and the most detailed kind of in-depth learning that we possibly can because of this Smarter Balanced panoply of tools that you've provided. So, I want to thank you for that. And, and have I got that right, that you don't assess Common, I mean, you don't field test the Common Core, you field test the, the assessment of the Common Core to see whether or not it's working?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That was the right answer, I think it was Mary Ann and Kathy.
My, my question is, is very close to what Nancy was just asking about. In the past, we've had a lot of complaints about the people writing tests and not fitting questions to local needs and so on, local cultures. Is there any safeguard in place, other than the formative testing, or field testing aspect to, well, preface all that?
Yeah. Concern about bias in testing has a long history, and we, as a state, have been engaged in, we have, we have been engaged in many ways to minimize or, and eliminate any kind of bias that there is in, in, in the items that we write. One of the things we often, we often hear is that, that we must write the items in dark closets. And actually, what, what happens is, we, we hire, we hire Michigan educators to write the items. But then, it's not the, it's not those same people who write the items that review the items. We get people who have no investment in the items, but who are advocates for students with disabilities, or English language learners, or Arabic-speaking students, or Spanish-speaking students, or urban students, or rural students, come in and say, you know, you need to change the context of this item because it talks about mowing the lawn. Urban students don't get that opportunity. Or, we need not to use the word attic because that word does not, does not appear in some languages. So, we get, we do go through this, and there are, as far as I recall, seven places in our item development procedures where an item can be rejected because it has bias. Either based on the judgment of a panel without any data, or after it has been field tested, saying, okay, students of the same ability, students with disabilities of the same ability as students who don't have disabilities, in terms of their achievement level, do they get this item right with differing frequencies? And if that's the case, we look carefully at that item and say, is this because this disadvantages, for example, an English language learner, or disadvantages a Spanish speaker? So, we do very careful vetting of all of our items that, to make sure that they're not biased against or for specific people. And that's one of the reasons we almost never have anything that deals with sports, is because the data has shown us that boys tend to do better on items that deal with sports, not because they know the content better, but because the item deals with sports, right? So, that kind of thing. We've had, we've had experience that show that that actually is the case. So, we, we really look at those things very carefully, and Smarter Balanced, because it has such a large population, can look at groups that we haven't been able to look at because we simply haven't had enough people to actually do the, do the analysis. So, for example, we have never been able to really look at Asian languages because we don't have enough in Michigan, but California certainly does. So, we are going to actually be able to increase the care with which we vet items for bias because of the larger population that we now have working through Smarter Balanced.
That's cool. Very happy, isn't it? And it will be more than just working in Michigan?
Yes, it will be across all of the states.
Thank you, Mary Ann, good question. Kathy, please.
I'm glad to hear that, that's what that was doing. In the formative test, teachers have always given tests during the course of that semester. Is the, the latest formative test for, from Smarter Balanced, they came from Smarter Balanced or developed, or the teachers who developed it themselves, where the names are?
The formative assessments will, the formative assessment processes and tools will be developed by teachers. They would be uploaded into this digital clearinghouse. There may be some to get things started that are developed specifically by Smarter Balanced, but it is intended that this really will be teacher-owned. So, that this really is about, this worked in my classroom, ah, this didn't work so well in my classroom.
So, it's really blending what teachers have always done, presumably, into the Smarter Balanced format?
Right, it's, it's blending that, it's blending what teachers have been doing in practice for a long time, and trying to find the best examples of that, because there are some good examples of formative assessment, and there are some not-so-good examples of formative assessment, and this is allowing the, the cream to rise to the top.
And is Smarter Balanced test going to be given not only at the end of the semester, or the end of the year, but at the beginning of the year, so you can measure pros?
Yes, so, the, the summative assessment will be given at the end of the year only. The interim assessments can be given anytime during the year, could be given as a pre-post, could be given as multiple time points during the year to follow students' progress, or to say, you know, these students didn't, my students did not necessarily do well on this unit, I might need to go back and do some reteaching. But yes, it could be as a pre or post.
But it's not, it's not a given program, it depends on each school or each teacher?
On each district, each school would say when they want to give the interim assessments.
Okay.
Okay. Good, great, Joseph, thanks for the update, thanks. And, you know, I know this is sacrifice for your family too, by the way, you're on the plane a lot, that doesn't go unnoticed, you're getting back late at night on things, so I appreciate that too.
Do you want to go into the five-year plan?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, okay. You knew that.
Thought I could slip by there. No, actually, I just forgot it.
All right. So, we have four major transitions in assessment that will be happening over the next five years. We will be moving all of our assessments online by the 2014-15 school year. We will be moving toward consortia for the summative assessments. We will be developing new assessments not addressed by the consortia, particularly to address areas, non-tested grades and subjects, for educator evaluations and measuring individual student growth. And we will be preparing Michigan schools for the transition to online assessment through pilots. So, moving online by 2014-15, the assessment consortia all plan to be online by 2014-15. All the new assessments that are being developed by MDE will also be online by the 2014-15 school year. And where assessments are mandatory, paper and pencil will be available. We cannot guarantee that every school district will be ready for an online assessment with 100% of their students by 2014-15. We hope the vast majority will be there, but where the assessments are mandatory, we will need to make a paper and pencil option available. The difficulty there is that students' online results will be returned near immediately. Students who take paper and pencil tests will have their results returned whenever the paper and pencil processing is completed. So, there will be a premium in terms of what you get back that can be used instructionally if you move online. Where the assessments are optional, paper and pencil will not be available, we will only provide the optional assessments online. And it is anticipated that the state will bear the cost of development administration scoring and reporting of these optional assessments, but that will require ongoing appropriations. We received an appropriation to develop these assessments, just like the consortia received an appropriation, a grant from the federal government, only for development purposes. We also received a grant to develop new assessments in non-tested grades and subjects, but only for development. We have not yet seen any funding for administration, and in fact, it was appropriate that we didn't yet because we're not to the place where we're going to begin administering these at this point. So, moving toward the consortia for summative assessments, Smarter Balanced is going to be a summative assessment in English language arts and mathematics, and it is anticipated to replace MEAP and MEAP Access, and I forgot to put MME in here, and MME in mathematics, reading, and writing. Dynamic Learning Maps is a summative alternate assessment in English language arts and mathematics for students with significant cognitive disabilities. It is anticipated to replace my access in reading, writing, and math. And then, there is the world-class instructional design and assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities. It is anticipated to replace MY Access in reading, writing, and math. And then there is the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Consortium. It's quite a name. Or another consortium that is currently being formed. This is a summative assessment for English language learners on English language proficiency, and that is anticipated to replace our English language proficiency assessment. One of the things that will be happening with this English language proficiency consortium is that it will be based on content standards, that English language content standards that are aligned to the Common Core. Our existing English language content standards are several years old, 2002, I believe, need to be updated sometime soon so that we can move to an assessment that is based on the Common Core, so that when essentially, based on English language proficiency, a student is identified as proficient, they have equal opportunity for success in the class, in an English-speaking classroom, as their non-ELL peers. And that would require them being ready for the Common Core. So we are moving toward consortia, and we are developing optional assessment scenarios not addressed by the consortia. So again, as I said, we received an appropriation to begin developing this. We have begun with our contractors, the development of new assessments, to measure growth for students of all educators. These are classified in two ways, either as full-service assessments, or as model assessments. I'll go through the full-service assessments first. We have a kindergarten entry assessment that is to improve instruction through measurement of student profiles in five domains. So this is when students come into kindergarten, we are supposed to have ready for those students, an assessment that will look at their language and literacy level, their preparedness for mathematics instruction, their approaches toward learning, their social-emotional development, and physical well-being and motor development. So this is branching out from just the academics that we've been used to developing. And we're working very closely with the Office of Grade Start, and with the Center for Educational Performance and Information on this development, so that we get it right. This is a new area for us, and we have just been able to post the position that we'll be the project manager for the development of this assessment.
Could I ask, what format will this be? I mean, I can't imagine this being an online kind of, I mean, this has got a whole lot more to it than just answers, numbers, and answers. How do you anticipate, or have you done that already?
So we have some, we have some sense, it's going, we believe it will be similar to what we've done with MY Access. We've been moving MY Access online in terms of, MY Access is an individually administered assessment, in general. And the teacher and the shadow administrator that work from on MY Access essentially give students the task, the students perform the task, and then they enter the results online.
Oh.
Right? So it still would be, we anticipate it, it still would be an individually administered assessment that is developmentally appropriate for the students, students not sitting down to a computer, but those kind of results entered online. That's what we anticipate this will be.
I was just trying to figure out how, is it true that kids are going to be in the MY Access?
Right. Full-service assessments as well. We will have interim, pre-post assessments in kindergarten through grade two in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Again, this is a new area for us, so we are investing heavily in work with experts in assessment of students, who are very young students in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, both with people from, who are well-known from Michigan State University and Notre Dame, to very well-known people in Mathematics and English Language Arts. Science interim assessments will also be given in grades three through seven as well, as will social studies interim assessments in grades three through eight, so that we can measure what students are gaining in Science and Social Studies throughout a year. The high school course content assessments will also be pre-post assessments in the Michigan Merit Curriculum. So we're developing in the required credits in Science, Biology, Chemistry, Physics, and our Science, pre-post assessments. In Social Studies, it's American History plus Geography, World History plus Geography, Economics and Civics. Algebra II and Geometry will not be covered by the Smarter Balanced assessment, simply because you can take those in 12th grade. And we're giving the Smarter Balanced assessment in 11th grade. And then we're developing an assessment for English 12, a course content assessment for English 12. The pre-post assessments, we're developing them simply as pre-post assessments at the beginning because that is the purpose. We have to develop something that can measure student growth over the period of a semester or a year. But we will work toward more options of more opportunities to test during a year, so that you might be able to say, okay, I taught this particular unit in geometry, give me a test that's over this particular unit. When we first come out with this, it will just be full-course assessment, pre-post. But more opportunities to be flexible in designing the testing experience as we move later on. We will also have model assessments in Health, Physical Education, and the Arts. Model assessments are not full-service. We will be developing these, but we will not be anticipating that we would administer score and report these, that these would really belong to the district, so that they could, in particular, address the different types of things that students would need to do that are outside what we might necessarily be able to do using a computer. Also, what the suite of summative and interim assessments will look like, if you look at this table, it's, I like complex tables. Where you have an I, we would be talking about interim assessments.
I thought this was a B.
Where you have an I, those will be interim assessments based on grade-level content expectations. Where you have an M, a small m, those will be mandatory end-of-year interim assessments. So essentially, we're going to be entirely getting rid of MEEP, in that that end-of-year interim assessment will serve as the replacement for MEEP in Science and Social Studies. Where you have a C, those will be course content assessments. Large M, that would be end-of-year course content assessments would essentially replace the MME. And where you have a small s, those are grade-level tests for Smarter Balanced, and the large s are the course content assessments for Smarter Balanced as well. So we've got a lot of these things going on here. We're trying to cover as much as we can so that individual educators can get growth measures on their students throughout the year.
Another question. It just, it occurs to me that as we're trying to curry our districts to meet the needs of the child's academic needs where they are, not just those who are behind, but those who are way ahead. Would you, how would you assess a student that, say, at the seventh or eighth grade was actually taking a ninth or 10th grade math course? Would you take one of these assessments and move it down to that individual? Is that a capability you have here?
Particularly for the course content assessments, you could take those in any of grade eight through 12.
Okay.
Where students are in grade three through seven, if they're very far ahead or very far behind, what Smarter Balanced will do, and what the USED is asking the consortia to do, is to administer a test on grade level first, find out where they are on grade level, and then go above or below to get students where they are.
Okay, but you have a capacity?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you administer a test on grade level, and then a second?
No, it's essentially, so it would be the same testing event. You would get the regular test blueprint for, say, let's say you're a fourth grader, you take the fourth grade test, I'm considered proficient, but my score is very high. Well, I might be able to move up into fifth and sixth grade material to see where I am. So I can, first, I have to establish where I am within the fourth grade material, and then if I'm very high or very low, I could go above and below that to find out exactly where the student is on other grade-level material.
The adaptive nature of the test?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Kathleen, please.
Yeah, I wonder, ask the question about the technology. Do we have any idea how many districts are technology-ready?
We have the technology readiness tool that many districts have completed, and many districts have not. There are four more opportunities over the next two years for schools to enter their data into the technology readiness tool to find out where their gaps are. We don't have a really good sense of where all the districts are because not everyone has yet participated, but when they have, we will.
I wondered, is the state, do you think the state will be prepared? Then you should ask Mike. Do you think the state will be prepared to help those districts that are not technology-ready?
I think it's, if I may say so, an appropriate issue for us to bring up in our finance study. Because I think it could and might require a different thinking about resources, but for now, this is our best effort to say, get ready if you can locally, and then there's a role that we might want to consider ourselves, as you're saying.
Eileen, please.
I think, wasn't the technology survey sent out in June?
Yes.
So I'm wondering if we can do a tickle to the same mailing list, maybe, you know, first part of October, because I would sure hate to have schools just not have gotten to that because it was summertime, and then have it never happened.
Now, the window for participating in the survey has closed. It will open again in the fall.
Thanks.
It is cyclical, and it's going to be kind of a constant reminder.
So we are-
I'm going to just, so that it doesn't look like, you asked me to do this in our retreats, so remember that about 2:30, you said, and the board can extend as long as they want, so we want to remind ourselves, or this is the first time I was asked to do it, but that we would, we would remind ourselves that your intent was to try to end by 3:00, and if not, you could move to move past 3:00. So as it gets closer to that, if we don't get, this is not meant to rush it. Look, we need to do what we need to do, okay? This is just kind of our way of catching ourselves a little bit. And if it got closer to that time, we just had a quick resolution to extend. And that's not to shorten this, by the way, so just keep going, Joseph. I just didn't want to do it at the beginning of John's report, it would look like.
All right. So we are preparing Michigan schools for online assessment through operational opportunities, so these are tests that count, that students are taking online. So we do have online answer documents for MY Access, where students actually take the test in an individually administered situation, but the teachers, administrators actually enter the data online. MEEP, we have an online social studies pilot that happened last year, is happening this year and next year. Online Science will happen next fall. MME Day Three will happen in spring of 2014, to give the high schools an opportunity to participate in online assessment. And English Language Proficiency Assessment happened last spring, will happen this next spring. And field test opportunities, Smarter Balanced will have multiple opportunities in spring of 2013 and 14. Same with Dynamic Learning Maps. And the interim assessments, we've got a lot of field testing going on over the next couple of years to get those all ready. And the kindergarten entry assessment will be available as an online field test in spring of 2014. So we have a lot of opportunities, getting people ready, understanding what it will be like before it becomes a really, the high-stakes kind of assessment that will be necessary under Smarter Balanced. And here are some of the timelines. I'm not going to walk through all of these, but essentially, we have a lot of things that have to happen before we can go live, but this gives you a sense of where we will be in each of these particular areas over the next several years.
Mike?
John? Dan?
Look at Slide 12. When we're talking about the credit content assessments, I'm always anxious, and I am always eager to try to keep encouraging the notion that, which is what I hope we're doing, we're testing for competencies based on the Common Core standards that are represented by credits. And when we use words even like high school course content tests, that can tend to reinforce that this is a standalone chemistry course, taught in some sort of linear sequence, which is what we're trying to encourage schools to get away from, or change, or do better. I mean, and for example, my daughter next year at New Tech High is going to take a combined biology history course. So you want, I assume, whatever this credit content assessment, you want her to be able to take that course, that assessment for the biology and the history, but she's not taking a biology course. Is there a way we can do better to make, to reinforce the notion, or, you know, there are integrated science sequences, that you want to be able to test whether folks are mastering the competencies and getting credit, and not reinforce that it's a standalone topic in a linear sequence?
Right.
How can we do even more to not have any assessment regime reinforce the traditional way of delivering learning, which may be less effective than some of the other new, different ways of delivering instruction?
Two short responses to that. One is, all of the interim assessments that we are talking about here are optional. I just forgot to mention that. The second is, the pre-post assessment, that last bullet on the page, flexibility in designing the test experience, so that we might have, for example, unit tests. So for example, we have to start somewhere. So we're starting with the pre-post, in essentially standalone, but as we move toward this more flexible testing experience, you'd be able to say, in my integrated course, I taught this portion of the biology course content, or the credit content. Therefore, I want a unit test based on that, and so I can move forward. So I don't have to, so I wouldn't have to test as a whole, all of biology. So we are preparing to move toward that kind of thing, but as we begin development, we have to develop from something that's a little more linear, and then we can move toward that less linear approach.
And I understand that getting to that modularization of the content is ideal, but also, I am concerned if we're reinforcing a traditional mode, when we're trying to encourage innovative, effective, whatever is effective to teach the content, we should be trying to, you know, reinforce that or encourage that.
Richard, on the same point, I think it would look like.
Yeah. The test will reveal whether the mixed approach, or the linear approach is more effective. So the test just tests a stated amount of, a stated subject area, and then whether it's, whether you're going to learn chemistry better than with biology, or a straight linear one, that's what the test will reveal.
I understand that. We've had a real challenge since we passed the Michigan Merit Curriculum to make real what it says, which is, these are not, these are credits and competencies based on standards. These are not, these are not courses, you're not required to take four years of math. So that, we want to encourage it to be delivered in career technical, in integrated, in new delivery modes. We've just been really challenged to animate the reality of what we did pass, which is, it's credits and competencies, not a sequence of courses. So I'm always eager for us to find ways to make that delivery real, in multiplicity of effective ways to teach the content, not to reinforce that you do this in a traditional modality of a sequence of years of learning, you know?
Well, may I observe that one of the results of moving to testing has been the discovery, much to the distress of progressive educators, that traditional direct instruction is the most effective method, rather than the indirect creative approaches that were thought to, were assumed to be more effective.
Why don't we work on this? We get the points, and I think a little bit of what could, number one, I'm hearing, language is important. So if we're using the word courses, it might inadvertently send that we think that's the way. And it might be, to your point, Richard, that in theory, let's say at the end of the biology history, which is exciting to hear, there might be two separate assessments, in effect, that would determine that over that two-year sequence of biology/history, how did it do compared to the two-year sequence that was more traditional? And that could, that could maybe help us understand, is it what we hope it to be? But I think some of it's also our language that I think is a good point on not accidentally reinforcing that that's the preferred model. But it would be, it is going to be interesting as we see these things shake out, where that-
And absolutely, and that's my major point, is it's, you know, the language matters because it reinforces either a way we have to do it, you know? And I don't know how many times I've read press accounts, and even, you know, former Governor Granholm, it's four years of math that are required. No, it's a set of math credits that represent competencies. And if you get them all done in one year, or if you do, you know, get them standing on your head, that's what we care about.
I think we can get to both. Other questions? Or, Dan, I forgot you, sorry.
I think three, I have three areas I'm inquiry, so if I need to-
It's a lawyer thing. We get to three.
I know, but if I have to- I know, but if I have to- With that too, baby. But if I have to break them into two groups, just let me know, I can circle back around a second time for numbers two and three. So I just want to make sure I have this timeline right. So, we will administer Smarter Balanced here in the state for the first time in the spring of 2015?
Yes. The summative Smarter Balanced. The interim Smarter Balanced should be available throughout the year, of the 14-15 school year.
Throughout the 14-15 school year?
Yes.
Okay. There will not be a Smarter Balanced, so, meaning that we will also be able to administer it in the fall of 14, 14-15?
The interim assessments.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, great. Meaning that the last time that we would see MEEP, then, would be that same year? Is that right? 14-15?
The last time we would see MEEP would be fall of 2013.
13.
Mm-hmm.
So there's not a need to administer MEEP and Smarter Balanced in the same year, in order to kind of norm them?
That's what the field test and pilot test is for.
Okay.
So that we can create those kind of linkages between the MEEP and the Smarter Balanced. We will have, because, that was one thing we were actually a little bit worried about, is fall 13 to spring of 14 is a long time, but if you have those interim assessments in place, then you can still measure growth within the year in 20, from 2014-15, and also link the fall 2013 to what happened in fall of 2014. So, we'll still have the kind of linkages that we need to continue with the accountability and educator evaluation growth measures.
All right, great. So just to be clear, then, so the last time we'll see MEEP is 14 months from now?
Correct.
Right? Smarter Balanced, interim assessments during that year, summative in the spring of 14?
15.
Spring of 15. 13. So what happens in the spring of 14? Nothing?
Spring of 14?
Get a year off. The kids get a year off.
What happens in the spring of 14 is, we do have the MME in high school. And the follow to that would normally be the fall of 14, for the elementary and middle school, but because we will have those interim assessments in place, we'll have enough to go forward.
Okay, great. Okay, second thing. Talk to us a little bit, so this move to, actually, I'm sorry, four areas of inquiry.
It's not a follow-up.
Yeah, it's a separate, entirely separate. I'm not even going to argue that it's a follow-up to one of these three. Second line area of inquiry, the move to online delivery of the assessments, talk to us a little bit about the implications for that around the timing of the state's release of official results statewide. And so, you talked a little bit about an individual district or school will get their results faster for students who take it online, versus students who use pencil and paper. Statewide?
We anticipate that the statewide results will come back sooner, but not a lot sooner. What, the real benefit of going online is that individual students who take the test get their individuals' results back very quickly. And schools and districts, if they finish their testing early, they get their results back early. They get them back almost immediately. But we still have to go through all the quality control, make sure that every, all the demographic data are right, because we have all those demographic type reports that we have to do. So, we're still going to have to go through all the quality control, quality assurance that we currently do, before we release statewide data. So the benefit is not going to be that we're going to seriously increase, or seriously reduce the amount of time that it takes to report state-level results, but that we will seriously reduce the amount of time that schools and students and teachers have to wait to get their data back.
So I want to raise this issue now, then. Thank you for that.
So in other words, you've got to wait for 100% of the tests to come in, before you can identify the bottom 5% and the top 5%.
That's correct. We have to wait for all of, so, the last 12 weeks of the school year is the testing window for Smarter Balanced. Some districts may choose to have all their students take that in that first week, and get all their results back, and they're done. But we have to wait for everyone to get their results back, the end of the window, then do all the quality control, before we can do statewide release.
Got it. I want to raise this issue now, then. I think it's important. Particularly given that fast turnaround of these assessments should be really useful to teachers and schools in the delivery of education to kids, there's a real issue of equity around making sure that every school has the appropriate infrastructure, at least the opportunity to get the appropriate infrastructure, to deliver those assessments online, right? You can easily see a situation where poorer schools or districts don't have the resources to acquire the necessary infrastructure, and have to do it pencil and paper, and don't get their results back for 12 weeks, whereas wealthier districts get their results back the next day, and are tweaking their teaching and learning, right? You know, a week or two later, and getting, kind of compounding the better results for wealthier kids versus more challenged situations for poorer kids in districts and schools. So, to the point that was raised earlier, and I forget who raised it.
Was it a good point?
Fantastic point. Yeah, right. It was all of you. To the point raised by all of my esteemed colleagues earlier, the fine point, a real issue, like seriously, a real issue of equity at stake in making sure that folks are prepared for this transition.
The state has to put money into that.
Absolutely, yeah, clearly.
Actually, I think that was my point.
But this is an example of the kind of issue we need to attend to, and look at how we finance it.
Am I allowed to proceed to three and four, or shall I?
That's up to Cassandra.
Oh, are you in line?
I don't know if she's counting that as a follow-up, or-
I'm keeping track.
All right, issue number three.
Is this an issue or an area of inquiry?
Area of inquiry, number three. That's right. Kindergarten readiness assessment. So are we intending to develop a new assessment? When I hear you say that we're developing one, or from scratch, or are we going to use EDI, or work product sampling?
This is, that's actually part of what will go out in the request for proposals, is people would be able to propose an existing assessment, so that we don't have to do complete from the ground development. Or it could be something that someone might propose something different, and, so it really depends on what happens through the bid process.
Okay. Let me just register my early opinion on this. So, the real, one of the real benefits to using something, to using something like EDI, or work sampling, is that other folks are using it too, right? And there's an ability to compare apples to apples across, so that exactly what we're getting the benefit of, or one of the things that we're getting the benefit of by moving to Smarter Balanced in partnership with this other consortia, consortia of all these other states, is that we get a much wider pool of folks to, right? All the things you talked about with bias, and everything else, right? So a much wider sampling pool, and so on and so forth. And I would hate to see us strike off on our own. We can strike off, but if we're going to do so, let's do so with others. Sure.
There's a process that the Bureau is going to right now, that is called the Spotlight Process, and so, the [inaudible] kindergarten readiness. And those are, one of them is the work sampling, there's a number of them, but they are doing their pitches at this point. So, we are using and having the advantage of what others have been doing, so it's not like we're starting out scratch.
Great. Love to hear more about that as it progresses. I mean, if there's a decision made to pivot and go from scratch, I'd love to have a conversation about that, and the long-term implications of that here. Not that it's necessarily wrong, but it would cause me some concern. So last is, there were these four, so when you got started with the five-year assessment plan, this portion of the presentation, there were these four major transitions that you highlighted, Page 8. Moving assessment online, moving toward consortia, development of new assessments not addressed by the consortia, and preparing Michigan schools for the transition to online assessment. If we had to prioritize those four, dangerous question, I know, but if we had to prioritize those four, what's the right order of priority there?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know that I am ready to put a priority on it on the fly, but I think that's a good question for us to really consider.
I raise it just because in a world of limited resources, and it's regrettable that we live in that world, but we do, I think it's really important that we have priorities. And I think I'll go ahead and stake out, so, well, it's tough. I mean, we should have a conversation about that. Sure.
Let me just interrupt Dan with my finger in his face. The other thing to remember right now is that we're looking at getting rid of seat time waivers for digital learning. So, anything that we might be trying, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Sorry, I'll face forward. What I was saying is that if the School Aid Act is being examined with an eye toward being able to learn anytime, anyplace, anyway, and anypace, then there's a larger conversation that would need to take place on these priorities, because if that were to happen, then meshing this with a larger statewide effort to get digital learning into kids' hands is a different, is a completely different set of mixed priorities.
And it's hard, because these things overlap and are mixed, but if it comes down to a situation where you've got to chase one, you can only chase three of the four in budget processes, I think it's just important to know upfront what the three are that are most important. And I certainly, so let me just say this again, and I'll end with this comment. I think preparing schools for the transition to online assessment, given what could be just a, an enormous equity gap that gets created, if not all schools are equally suited for the use of online assessments, I would make a strong argument that that one has to be high on this list.
Okay. Eileen, I think, was next, or did I? Yes.
I think that the term I've been hearing is "digital divide," which is the unbelievable and difficult fix we may find ourselves in with kids who don't have access to technology, and kids who do, whether it's rural poverty, or city poverty. So, we need to focus on equity, on digital hookups and digital equipment. I'm less concerned about which of these would come first, because I think that that's a budgetary process through the governor's office and the legislature. I am really concerned about us making that case from the very beginning, that whatever is done has to be, has to have parity across the state for all kids, whatever that looks like.
Richard?
I think we're looking in the past here. No school, however poor, is without a telephone system. And technology has become cheaper, cheaper, and cheaper. Now, it's true that poor districts cannot afford the latest hyper-advertised stuff, but people, 15 years ago, in a parochial school in impoverished Detroit, I was doing computer-adaptive testing. This is not going to be a problem. I think that we imagine it is. Now, other aspects of the digital divide, I think, are significant, but this is not one of them. The one area-
Emmett, please.
The one area which we may need to do some research on, is there may be rural districts which don't have easy access to internet. I think it's the rural schools that may be in trouble in this regard, rather than the poor ones, per se.
All right. I think it was-
I can just put a follow-up.
Okay, follow-up, and then-
I don't know where the inequity is going to lie. I do remember getting an email about two months ago from somebody over here, which is not a big city, saying that they had no smart boards, 15-year-old social studies textbooks held together with five colors and duct tape, which I had a picture of, and one computer for 30 kids. So, it's out there, we just don't know. But that survey, that's why I really am pushing on the survey, because that is so important. If we can get that information back, we've got a starting point.
If I may just say to that point, I would fully agree, because I already know there are some poor districts that are fully implemented, and there are some rich districts that just keep putting it off. And so, I mean, it doesn't mean, it shouldn't be, I think in our study, there's going to be an opportunity to say, based on the survey results, is it infrastructure, is it hand instruments, is it, what do we anticipate, three years from now, they can use, you know, whatever that, you know, we wouldn't have thought the iPad, and before you know it, it's something 18 months from now, we can hardly imagine. I think it was Cassandra, oh, was I, I keep saying Eileen today, it was Nancy, and then Cassandra.
It's all right. I'll have to turn the right way here. Just real quick, Richard, I can honestly say, the school that I work in, we have 15 computers for the whole school. So, while we might be able to do the test, we certainly won't be able to do it within the timeframe allowed. And I agree with you, Mike, there are some, there are some very well-off districts that also have that same problem. And one of my big concerns has been for a long time, is the broadband, about what is it that people have access to, and how can they get it, and how quickly can they get it? Even with the 15 computers we do have, even though I'm working with Michigan Virtual University right in the same city, there are days we cannot get that program because of the lack of connectivity that they have, and the long time that it takes to connect. So, you know, there are a variety of things that we're going to have to consider. However, my question was on another topic. I'm going to pull a Dan here. Number two on a thought process, it could be. I may have an add-on. We started out this conversation many hours ago, talking about how the core content was, the new, the core content, how shall I say it, the new platform was just geared towards English Language Arts and Math. Is that correct? Okay. So, one can only imagine, then, that these Smarter Balanced assessments and all the other core content areas will be looking at our current core content standards for our state of Michigan, and yet this crosses how many states?
27.
So, given that, when you, on your timeline here, when you address these assessments, Smarter Balanced assessments for states that do not have the same standards, will the flexibility of creating these assessments reflect that difference from state to state, or how do you do that?
I'm not quite sure I understood the question.
Well, if you have, the Common Core is for math and English Language Arts. So to create a common assessment, then, while time-consuming and definitely of high value, it isn't impossible. What I'm trying to imagine, 27 different states with 27 different sets of standards for social studies, or for science, and you're going to have a Common Core assessment, and the Smarter Balanced, for those two areas, when there is no commonality, how do you do that?
Well, the science standards are on their way, and the social studies are under development. So I think it's, that's going to take some time-
So you've just geared it so that they will be done by the time you're ready for that?
I don't know about that. They're both going to be fairly controversial, especially in social studies.
Well, when you said the MEEP would no longer be given as of 2013, I was just trying to imagine how you would do that.
So, in science and social study, in science and social studies, we will be essentially replacing the MEEP with our interim assessments that we are developing, not through Smarter Balanced.
Ah.
So it would be the end-of-year interim assessment that would be required in science and social studies, in the appropriate grade levels.
Thank you.
Bingo. Cassandra, please.
My comments have been addressed very much.
We good? Cool. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to extend the meeting for the president's report and some other data, other information?
This may not get a vote here.
Moved by Cassandra, supported by Richard. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Can we have to stay?
Well, if people knew, I'm going to yield to Kathy for a bit of a report that she wanted to give as President Emeritus, but I wanted to speak very briefly about the process and relationship of the Governor's Finance Act project and our education innovation study. As everybody knows, the Governor's folks in announcing that effort certainly drew a lot of attention, and will all want to be involved in shaping and encouraging that. And it provoked uncertainty about the relationship between what we were proposing to do, including among potential funders. So, talking to the Governor's staff, and talking together, I think we were able to articulate that there is a, both difference and potential complementary roles that our proposed work can undertake, and can perform in relationship to what is, you know, a very, obviously, short-term, meaning a quick project that the Governor's engaged, and his team are engaged with, with McClellan, to look at how existing resources under the School Aid Act can be repurposed in order to implement some of the goals and priorities articulated by the Governor's education message around performance-based learning, and any time, any place, et cetera. And as you know, our study was conceived, and as we worked it through at the retreat and- conceived, and as we worked it through at the retreat, and it still remains a, more of a blank slate, look at what is the nature of education and how we deliver it that can be most effective, and how do we end up financing that same education system. So, it's broader, includes multiple topics, including potentially some we were just talking about, and longer term, and its impact. The two will certainly overlap in the sense there may be some areas where, where what we want to do is reinforcing things the governor proposes. There may be some tremendous differences in what we point to in terms of additional actions. But, so, we will continue to engage, to seek the funding support, hopefully with some of that clarification that I shared with all of you in, in place, so that we can move our effort forward. And I think in the short term, it is very important that we also contribute and inform and share our perspective with the McClellan Project. I know the governor's team is very eager to, in whatever way is important to do, to engage with the board, to get our perspective. And Mike and I, and we discussed, perhaps by our next meeting, trying to bundle up some of what we have already both recommended and encouraged that would have implications for the school finance project, and work through ourselves, a bit of our positioning and recommendations for that project as a board and department, so that we can offer that. And then I really think in any other way that we, as individual board members or as a collective, want to inform the McClellan group in their work is open and available to do so, and we can facilitate that very easily. So, that's an opportunity, and I think one we should think about how best to take advantage of, or even individual board members who want to contribute ideas. So, that's, I think, a good way of proceeding, where we will be working together and also attending to these important topics that overlap. For the McClellan Project? Well, they've articulated a timeline which originally said by October to try to wrestle their sort of recommendations and some sort of framework so that they could inform the governor's, well, what would be a potential legislative proposal for next year, that the governor would decide whether to embrace or not, or how to advocate or not. So, but the timeline may be, oh, you know, who knows exactly?
If I may add, a lot of that, I think the reason there's still a lot of room for the board department study, and I said this at the joint, or whatever that was when they announced this, is that a lot of his will be taking kind of this patchwork of things that went on with the state aid bill, and in some cases, shifting it over to the code, which would be appropriate. It would take contradictions out. I mean, a lot of it's almost cleanup, for lack of a better word. I don't mean they're not going to bring creativity to it, and that should be suggested maybe at our September meeting, as John said, that we would say, here's a few points we think really need to be considered. This isn't to say there isn't going to consider creative things, but I think we would want to be on record with our study to show what other opportunities there are, early college, early, early childhood, funding differences, you know, and have that thoughtfully done here. Because they've already said, because it's a different, a different goal, that that's not the intent of the McClellan Project. Now, I would just say for the record, or not for the record so much, but that I think there are folks who might wonder, is that really what's going to happen? So, that's why maybe everyone be as attentive as they choose to be. But I, kind of watching both these things formulate, think it's genuinely a good-faith thing on their part to kind of clean up the State Aid Act, and we have everyone from Dan and Carol and some others trying to help sort that out so that we can, right now, we have things we're defending sometimes that don't make sense because of the way the State Aid Act has been patchworked over 30 years. So, that one's going to be easy for us, kind of as a team, to help them get done. But I'm, I'm very optimistic that our own work on this can add a lot to the dialogue. And then, as John just said a moment ago, we already have a fair amount of commonality with the message, because we helped, in effect, shape the message with the board's work on what we thought would be important, and a lot of that ended up in his message that he's trying to codify. But I, I would say that it makes sense maybe to, that we would try to work on something to bring in September that might get your reaction to, hey, here's what we'd want to formally submit and see whether there's, there's board consensus on that. And yet, not take away what John just said, and, and I'm inferring, I guess, that everyone has the opportunity to pick up the phone and talk to McClellan, too, because they're-
They are very eager to engage fully with the board and get our perspective in the short-term project. So, we need to, because they certainly would hope that we would be supportive of some of what is proposed potentially, and also, you know, see areas where we have either broader, different issues, we would like to get into their short-term work while we look even more broadly at the long-term. So, if, if you're willing, I'd love for Kathy to have the chance to share the civic education piece.
Thanks a lot, John. I wish I'd like to say, but one of the things I was happy to see Mike talk about, the importance of growing childhood and scheming things, and that's what, been one of our priorities for many years now in Michigan, so nice to see it get mentioned on the front page.
We took a little closer to the mic.
When it gets mentioned on the front page of, whoops, on the front page of the paper, that, that helps. John was nice enough to let me just say a few words about this. I was invited to a conference convened by the Education Commission of the State of Lincoln at the end of June, and it was, they did it in partnership with the Campaign for Civic Education, Civic Mission of the Schools, which was meant to remind people that when public education was first developed, one of the main reasons was to make sure that the people were educated enough to be able to participate in our electoral system and vote on an informed and intelligent basis. So, I think we have a long way to go. So, this was all designed to re-energize people from various states. They had a series of conferences across the country, to energize people from all the states, to focus not only on STEM and science advancement technology, mentioning, but also on the civic mission of schools. One of the interesting things about this conference was it had a lot of students there, and young people, which was really encouraging. When I first got there, the night before, it's during eight o'clock the next morning, and all the people I saw in the restaurant in Tower, older people like me, and I thought, oh, my God, we have to get some young people. Well, the next day at the conference, there were lots of young people. I was so excited. So, that was really good. But I just wanted to let you know that there, there is this effort nationally, led by leading institutions, to really reemphasize the civic mission of schools. And they had good best practices and good ways of teaching. The workshops, the little work groups were led by the students, high school students, and they were right, really engaging kids. It was really encouraging. And another young man who was one of the key holders, probably working on advising people at Mass to get students on state boards by completing a leave, even if they're non-voting members, but to get students, which won't you, it's always other people. So, these were all interesting, exciting efforts, and I wanted you to be aware of the business going on, and somehow folded into what we're, what we're doing. And as a result, we are developing assessments in these areas, because I don't know, focus on, I know it's required, but depends on how, if it's required and enthusiastic. So, we have to get it to be enthusiastic, I think, and get these people aware of how important the civic mission of schools really is. So, thank you, John.
And thank you. I mean, you, Liz, and many others have always been eager to make sure we don't lose the focus on the broader role of schools in terms of bringing us together as a society, as we focus in a very aggressive way on all the academic, you know, and content skills we're eager to, to impart. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think we'd have to keep our focus on history and world history, world history. You know, the, the social studies are really critical. The world is, I mean, as I was sharing, the world is so much smaller. You know, as you see on television, people never heard of when I was a kid. It's really important to not be excited about enough of everything, although it could have been my other.
Thank you very much. I'm going to mention that in my report, I'll start out by, we've only done this for two months now, but I think maybe we should take out of my report the introduction of the new MDE team members and put it maybe right after public participation. Because in a way, you've gotten baptism by fire, that we call it, where you, but I think, and you're always welcome to stay, by the way. I don't mean to judge that. It's just that we'll do that, and that gives the option of people coming in right after lunch and leaving if they choose to. So, why don't I bump to that, because you were complete, John, I'm sorry if I jumped on that. Yeah. And I think the way, we're still figuring this out a little bit, most of these are funded federally, and they're filling existing positions to the department. And I think the routine we've asked, are directors involved, or are we asking folks to stand up and introduce themselves? Help me with this, Carol. Which?
Hannah.
Oh, okay, please. So, someone else should lead this.
Hi. My name is Teresa Galbini, and I just started about a month ago, and I work for the Children and Adult Care Program.
My name's Dawn Naishen, and I work for the National Sports Service, and I'm the analyst for the school administration.
Hi, I'm Taylor Worsler. I work in the Office of Law and Incident Outreach. I work with the American Publishing House for the line to give materials to our visually impaired students.
Hi, I'm Belinda Stewart. I'm with the Library of Michigan, and I'm a financial and finance analyst.
We might have had some folks here earlier on this side, or not so?
Not here and anywhere.
Okay, not here and anywhere. Thanks so much. And again, you're welcome to, to stay. I'm just getting to my stuff. This is, yeah, and they run away. You know, I think in the interest of time, I was going to talk a little bit more about emergency manager, but the bottom line is, we're going to follow the law, the judges, as the people speak in November. I was a little disappointed to be pulled back into this personally with the 70, since it's gone back to PA 72. And it's, it's unfolding as we speak. There are apparently some judge comments today and decisions, so we'll, we'll keep you up to date as we learn more about that. Speaking of Liz Bauer, I thought it was interesting that she was, I spoke at the consensus for change, and she was there. She's still an active participant. And then she mentioned to me, as she was passing, that she wanted me to know, she's president of a charter board that's opening, and a charter school. She's going to be on board president in Detroit, and it's going to use the Way Academy type, type strategy. That got started. Ironically, I wrote her back and, and said that I was teaching a grad course, and two of the kids, as their project, two of the kids, two of the, they're in districts. One was a Wayne Rees a consultant, one was a teacher in Westwood. They presented a project as, as their graduate course stuff to me in my part-time, you know, once-a-year course. And, and then it materialized into really what came out to be pretty much our first seat time waiver. In Westwood, if you remember, some of you visited that.
Her charter school is based on that, I think, that's it, yeah.
That's, that's exactly right. So, it's kind of an evolution of that, and it was just interesting to see her involved. We did new employees. Kathy Weller, I don't think's here, but we're going to get you the date of her, in case you're in the area and want to stop by at her, Kathy's been here 31 years and is retiring as, she's kind of our chief auditor. But one thing I really, I just, she's very inspiring. This is a person who all along, for, in recent years, has been taking nursing courses at night. She's going to complete them once she retires, and then change from being an auditor to a nurse, you know. And the other nice story about her, she literally, I, she's, this wasn't my image of her. I see her driving out one day, and she's got this red Firebird, and I'm looking at it like, is that Kathy Weller? It's the same one she drove the first day here, 31 years ago.
Oh, my gosh.
And she's kept it in great shape, obviously, rain or shine. She's got that thing. So, we're going to miss her, and very interesting person. My visits this last month or so, M.A. ISA Conference, Children's Leadership Council of Michigan, McClellan's meeting that John and I attended, and some of you, Michigan Futures, I hosted it. I'm on their board, hosted it here. We certainly were pretty involved in the school report card release and follow-up. Had a chance the other, last week to meet with the combined board. They asked me to, so I made it a point to meet with the combined board of Ipsy and Willow Run, who are trying to consolidate, to their credit voted that night to put it on the ballot. And I didn't want to miss a chance to encourage them to be leaders on that, because I, the hope is, if they can pull this off, other districts will see the wisdom in that, and not just, just head to kind of financial oblivion. You know, there's, there's too many economies of scale that can be gotten by people making that decision on their own. I was really impressed with a team from Arc Shop, along with what we call some pace-setter districts. They happen to be Kentwood, Godfrey, Lee, Saginaw, Ypsilanti, and Romulus that really have worked well, the Supes has to meet. And I was just very impressed with how it's changed the way they think about systems work in their district. And we're going to, we'll talk more about this at another time. We're going to plan a presentation. Mentioned David Borth, of course, I'd miss him. And, and, you know, you all know this already, but it was really an honor for me to kind of be able to say a few words at John Porter's funeral. In fact, M.A. SA asked me, they have a tradition, it's 31 folks that have passed on, and they have a tradition each year that you carry a rose during one ceremony. So, they've asked me to carry it for John. And, you know, as you know, I mean, he pioneered here, speak about the MEAP. I think, I don't think he'd be saddened to hear the MEAP is running its course. Who would have thought that many years? And it's, it's going to a new evolution that I think he kind of inspired here in many ways. And then certainly did a great job at Eastern Michigan and at DPS. And I don't know if you saw this, I think I might have noted this to you, but it was really interesting. His daughter came up to me beforehand. I, I knew I had met before, and kind of recognized her. And of course, as you know, I hold the job that John once held. She holds the job that I once held, as Assistant Soup for Neuron Valley. So, it was kind of a, just an interesting connection. And that concludes my report. Expedited, as it may be.
Can I say, thank you for extra effort with Willow Run and Ypsilanti. You know, I know some of those folks down there. And it's a real difficult culture combination, culture clash. And so, people are always anxious about, you know, are we really doing everything we can to help grease the skids for them, to make it possible for them to pull it off, which is still hard, even if, you know, everybody's trying to do it. So, thank you. You send a message that we're, we're bending over backwards to help move this along, whatever way is helpful.
Okay. Are we at, skipped right over that somewhere, sorry. We're at the last item. Yeah, I actually should have done this earlier, so let's fudge a little bit. This is where, was there any discussion on the criteria for grant programs, which I didn't do in the morning. So, let's combine the two now. You're welcome to pull something off for discussion and/or move to the, to the motion. Take a moment there, since I'm out of wa, out of order. Did you? Okay. Yeah, they would. I, this is just because I went back and didn't catch it. And that was even with the prompting that I didn't, didn't get, which my colleague was trying to get me to do earlier. So, thanks, Merz, for your attempt. So, now I think we're at J, and it's approval of state board event meeting scheduled for 2013. These, these turn out to be, as we try to do, the second Tuesday of each month, and before you now. Moved by Nancy, supported by Cassandra. Discussion, yes.
I, I don't know why I didn't see this. First time I looked at it. We're going to begin this morning. Is there, if there's a possibility to move that June meeting to the third Tuesday, or the first, one or the other? It'd be great. If not, maybe not based on, but that's okay.
Ford, would you like to take a moment and look at your?
What are you proposing?
The speeches, not that date. It'll be the week before, week after, or something.
You'll be one free of that obligation.
Well, whenever the answer was the date was.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, now you're, ah, okay. So, it was scheduled for, we were tentatively scheduling it for the 11th, and Nancy's asking you to the-
Could I do it?
Yeah.
Be better later if we could, just because we're, you know, then we're already proposing we're not going to meet during July. We got to review this prior.
Maybe come this morning.
You could find another date that works.
Why don't we tentatively vote on the 18th? And if somehow others saw a problem, we can always reconsider that at the next meeting. I can move, I think. I'm going to split-flop vacation week from that week to the prior week. No, no, it's not. I don't have anything planned. So I don't think that'll be a problem. I think I'll just pack it up. We're good?
Or you could come in shorts. I mean.
Well, that was one of the, that was one of the opportunities tonight, by the way, too. I thought.
I don't think the guests are going to be dressed up like you. Only the waiters.
I'll take this off. Yeah, just the waiters. Just those of us waiting.
Right.
So with that amendment to the 18th, and if there's, somehow when you get home, you see something different, we can think of amending that next month. But otherwise, as the rest stands, motion support. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Great.
Do we want to mention that October stays a second week?
We told it. Still, there was some discussion at one point about October going back and forth. It's the second, it's the second Tuesday in October. And John, did we want to?
Right. We thought, we didn't mention it this morning, but it would really, now we have this new accountability framework with the waiver. And we still have two sort of parallel, somewhat out-of-sync school report carding, you know, framework. The school accreditation system, which we've had for a while, have been seeking to change. But now we have a clear accountability, school performance reporting system. And let me just note, you know, the historic school accreditation frameworks, including our own, were efforts to try to gauge whether schools were quality. That combined two different types of measures. One were some inputs. Do they have certified teachers? Do they have a school improvement plan? And, and our accreditation system has six or seven of those factors, plus some student performance, our kids' learning data. The accountability system that we now have and is going to certainly drive attention and behavior change is all about student performance and growth. And I think that's the way accreditation systems were moving, to be more about performance, not about how many books are in your library or do you have qualified staff. So what this resolution seeks to do is reinforce what I hope is a position that we are comfortable taking, which I think is the right position. We do not need two dueling school report carding systems of whether schools are performing or not. And now with one that's a relatively clear, student-performance-based accountability system, this would be encouraging or supporting legislation that would basically wipe away the need for a separate accreditation, report-carding ed guess system.
Is that a motion?
I move this, this resolution, but we should discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, one second.
Second by, is it voted by Dan? And discussion. I think it was Cassandra, then right down this side, I think was.
So I understand why we would do this. And I understand the philosophy behind it. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm just trying to think out loud where the potential unintended consequences of doing this. So question number one, are we saying then that no school in Michigan would be quote-unquote accredited unless they go out on their own and go after a state NTA or something like that? Is that what happens?
Well, I think, yes, but I think the spirit of this bill that we would support in spirit eliminates the requirement that schools be accredited. Is that correct?
Be state accredited.
Be state accredited. And so another way of looking at it too, which I think was some of the fear in the field a year or so ago, was there are many opportunities to be unaccredited. That's gone, obviously, also.
Right.
But, yeah, that's true.
But, okay, so just getting back to the unintended consequences of that, there are things, there are some school, colleges and universities, for example, that require you to graduate from an accredited high school in order to get accepted. And if you want to get around that, then it's basically for the students to figure out how to do that. You know, my concern is, are we, are we putting our students at a disadvantage by not having any accreditation? And again, I'm just thinking out loud here.
You know, I think I have this right, but feel free to correct me, anyone, including anyone out there, that the district could be unaccredited and the high school accredited because of North Central. So, I mean, I think, I don't know that there are any high schools that haven't gone after North Central accreditation for that reason. I don't think they're counting, I don't think.
Okay. If that was something to alleviate my fear, if that was the case.
Anyone see that differently in a way I'm not thinking? I know my schools at the time, I'm not even, I'm assuming we were accredited as a state district, but it was all about them getting North Central accreditation for the colleges to be satisfied. Does that sound right? Yeah.
Okay. So all of our high schools are accredited through the NTA?
I don't know. They all have the option.
Well, okay.
But is any, I think.
So you're right. So getting back to, you know, NTA, I'm assuming there's a cost to go through NTA accreditation, there's a membership fee, things like that. Do we have schools that because of those criteria wouldn't be eligible if you would? Because they don't have the funding or something along those lines?
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a good point. I'm not sure, do we know, do our colleges and universities require, do most of them, some of them, all of them say you have to graduate from an accredited K-12 school? And if some of them do or a lot of them do, are they looking at our state accreditation system? Are they exclusively looking at the North Central and others that are accrediting, you know, K-12s?
I don't know about Michigan. I mean, I do know, like, University of California system requires accreditation.
Yeah. We should be firmer on this. So it could be with a caveat. But I, I think what it is, Cassandra, is I don't think the colleges are looking at whether your district is accredited. Because as I said, your district could be accredited and your high school not accredited.
Right.
I think they were looking for whether your high school was accredited.
I think you're right.
And, and I'm, I'm pretty sure there, I'm quite, I'm absolutely certain, I shouldn't say pretty sure, that there have been districts that have been accredited because of kind of our system, which was pretty much everyone got accredited and the high schools weren't. And then those kids were in jeopardy because they came from a high school that wasn't accredited even though the district was. So I'm pretty sure there's not an intersection that they still would have to do the North Central, but we ought to be.
You're not going to do the North Central for building level?
For building level. Because that, to your point, I'm pretty sure the colleges are looking at was the high school accredited, not whether the district was accredited.
Yeah, I think you're right. I would mention.
We'll, we could, if we can't find this out by the time you vote, we could put a caveat or something in this if you'd like, but, oh, Linda's here.
And I have to confess, I didn't hear the whole question. So if we could get a kind of a restatement or summary.
I am just thinking out loud about the unintended consequences of not having an accreditation system. Primarily, colleges and universities that require you to be graduate, to graduate from an accredited high school in order for admissions, you know, are we putting our young people at jeopardy by not having an accreditation system? Or are the majority or all of our high schools accredited through an outside agency anyway? So in which case, what matters?
About a third of our schools across the state, elementary, middle, and high school are accredited by an outside agency, primarily Advanced Ed of Michigan, which would be more familiar to some of you, is North Central. Over, historically, there has been less and less emphasis on an accredited situation because districts or universities and colleges tend to rely on ACT and SAT scores as their, as their metric. However, there are some states, such as Georgia, that do require that a school, a student be from an accredited high school. And we, we do have stories of where students have been adversely affected, primarily out of state and primarily in prestige-type universities. So it would be minimal. Frequently, when we've been asked in the past for coverage on this topic, we've been able to say Michigan has or does not have, depending on where we were historically, an accreditation system. But the school is meeting these kinds of criteria. And you get mixed results from that.
I was saying earlier, I, I'm certain there have been districts that are accredited, but their high school has been not accredited. So it can't be about the district being accredited that overwhelmed or overruled that other issue. To the degree it was even an issue with the university is your point, that the ACT may have prevailed over that anyway.
It's about building accreditation when it comes to college admissions.
Nancy, please.
Similarly, I, I am concerned with two words in this, in the title. And it's in the third line of the title, and it says, "And repeal of." I think that there is credibility in the term accreditation that people find. And if this, in fact, were to happen, I don't think we want to say we're repealing Michigan's accreditation system. I would like to see it say something like that the flexibility request will replace the current Michigan accreditation system. Because I think that that's, in fact, what it's doing. And I think that the honesty then, for people to understand that we still value high rigor, like accreditation, is because of what we've been able to do with this flexibility request. So I don't know exactly the right words. I'm not the best word smither, but that is a term. Or Smith D or something. But I'm just wondering if we need to talk about this in terms of replacement rather than repealing.
Well, if I understand the legislation correctly, it is basically proposing, we don't need a state accreditation program anymore. We have a, you know, a pretty transparent school performance system with the accountability stuff, though districts are free to be accredited by these third-party organizations if they see fit. So, so it is, this particular legislation, unless I'm mistaken, is about sort of wiping away the current school accreditation system. If we were, though, to replace the accreditation system with our accountability system, it would be, I think, a more affirmative act where we're basically saying, now the priority schools are the ones that are unaccredited. I mean, that would be the simplest way to, you know, to mesh the systems again. We've been trying to mesh the systems for years to say, if you're not performing down here, you're unaccredited. And then the interim accredited are these guys, you know, they're the focus school or, you know. Now we have a new regime. So I think we have to decide, do we want to encourage that or do we want to encourage, we have a pretty transparent accountability regime here. We do, we do not have a need for a state accreditation system, though people can get accredited if they want.
Sally, do you have something?
We probably could flip-flop the two lines and say, resolution to replace Michigan's accreditation requirement with accountability measures and admissions through the EMTA by fill or what?
Mm-hmm.
I think that gets to where, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. And I think that the fact, the trouble you point out, I ran out of trouble, but the conflict, the consideration that you point out is the fact that the last line says that we were supporting the concept of possible 5659. I think you could still support that concept, but have a replacement that says we have high rigor standards and we value that.
That might, dear Kathleen.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I have the same, which are the same feeling. Reading the history of accreditation in Michigan was really quite interesting. And I know that the, that the board, the state board, when they finally got the accreditation approved by the legislature, they thought it was a real victory, that that was a real accomplishment. And I think there's something to the word accreditation that Nancy said. And I wondered if we, if we really want to get rid of that word altogether. I mean, it gives me great pause to do that. Because if we want to, if we're talking about, we have, what's in the flexibility request is an accountability system. I don't know why that can't be called accreditation system. I mean, I, I don't know why we can't keep the word. Because I think it's a very important, it has, it has significance to a lot of people.
I think, I think from the, from those people like you and I who love to, not love, but who find great value in, in the meaning of words, that's true. Unfortunately, the meaning of accreditation in this state has taken on the same meaning as, instead of having a tissue, you now have a Kleenex. So it's, that's what it means. And so unfortunately, accreditation here in this state to too many people does not mean what we think of as accreditation, but rather the current system that exists. And so I think that that would not, I could be wrong, but I.
No, it's analogous to what we just discussed with the MEAP. The MEAP was one of the first statewide standardized assessments. It was a breakthrough, good thing. A school accreditation system was one of the first waves of some quality assurance for schools. And now we're in another wave, you know, of a more robust, based more on student learning than inputs variant. So I agree with Nancy and I understand the point about the language.
Well, I understand. You don't want to repeal. Right. That's a good point.
But I mean, if there's, if there's, if there are real issues here, we're trying to encourage a legislative moment, which may or may not be soon, to basically help us use our system as the de facto accreditation system. If the legislative committee needs to consider this more, if we have time, I just, we thought we'd couple it with this, we have this statewide accountability framework that is the next phase of performance reporting for schools. You know, we should encourage not having multiple systems.
I, I like, I like Sally's recommendation of flipping the sentence. And I'd be happy to, to consider that even today. But if others want to wait longer, we could.
Well, the legislature is not going to do it tomorrow.
No, they've got MAFS tomorrow.
You know, they'll move me back until the middle of September, probably. It's then just for.
That's true. That's true.
So there's no rush really about this, I would say.
That's a pleasure, though.
You might want to consider more of the.
Well, but are there any issues with it either? Then I guess with the language flip. We can do it? I'm good to go?
Stay, I support you.
There's nothing to do with, it's, it's to do with the resolution, but not, not the, I find that's a, sort of. So you want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Please.
This morning, someone brought up the fact that when students are career and college-ready and they can't be in a position of requiring remediation. Is that correct?
Would you say that again, Mary Ann?
I just want a clarification on the situation with remediation when we're talking about career and college-ready.
I believe that was in relation to the testing.
Right.
And that if the student gets a certain score on a test, then the higher end will agree that they do not go into remediation when they go into college. Correct?
Is that, okay. So I have another thing.
This has nothing to do with, it's, it's to do with the resolution, but not what you, not the title. I find that's a sort of. So you want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Please.
This morning, someone brought up the fact that when students are career and college-ready, they can't be in a position of requiring remediation, is that correct?
Would you say that again, Mary Ann?
I just want a clarification on the situation with remediation, when we're talking about career and college-ready, and.
I believe that was in relation to the testing, and that if a student gets a certain score on a test, then the higher end will agree that they do not go into remediation when they go to college, correct?
Is that, okay, so it has nothing to do with this, okay.
Okay, any other comments? Richard?
To say that, I think with the key of the title, I can support this.
Okay, call a question?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
I agree.
Great, minutes. Okay, thank you, and now we're at consent agenda, item 11. Have a motion, please?
Move.
Moved by Nancy, supported by Eileen. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Comments? State Board, Nance?
One quick one, I had the opportunity to go to ECS in June in Atlanta, and heard some wonderful presentations, not the least of which was Sandra Day O'Connor on civics, and she has a new program out that's available free of charge for all school systems, it's called iCivics, and it takes kids in a game situation online through all of the different parts of our civic education, because she was so appalled of the lack of civic understanding and knowledge, K-12. So, it was fascinating, we had a chance to look at it, it was actually pretty darn robust, and kids really get engaged, we watched several classrooms go through this, and they were all into it, especially the brush to the White House, where they talked about all of the things that needed to happen in order to become president of the United States, and then they took a very, a breakdown to the local level, if you were going to run for your city commissioner, or whatever you would call at your city level of government, what would you need to do, and we each got to play a role as to who could win, win the election to do that. It was fascinating, but it was very good to hear from her, and I've heard from Bill Gates, he was there, and one of the things he talked about was this long-term, which I'm guessing our staff knows about, Ida, the five-to-ten-year grant that they have, and looking at teacher preparation institutions, and teacher evaluations, what we talked about today, and they are doing long-term, five-year studies of a pilot to see how this works. Fascinating stuff, and I think we are so blessed to have a man like that in our midst, that is willing to take on the hard topics like that, to give it the really in-depth kind of research that no public institution would ever be able to do, and they're doing it. So it was very, very fascinating, so I'll cut it short of that.
Okay, other comments? Okay, Madurn, good meeting, thank you. September 11 is our next meeting.